Welcome to today's meeting of the Raleigh City Council. We're going to start today with our consent agenda. One item has been pulled, I two, Neighborhood and Community Connections to Parks and Greenways. Before we start, I just want to mention that Councilmember Melton will be joining us today, virtually, but he will be here later. Until that time, he will be excused. Let's see, so do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda minus I two? Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Branch, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, that was unanimous, clerk. Councilmember Cox, would you like to address the issue that you have?
Yes, I wanted to get some clarity about the policy regarding health equity for this program. As I've pointed out before, District B, we have, you know, very few amenities. For example, the population in District B within a 10-minute walk of a park is 19% compared to other districts, which are as high as 44 and 45%. Population within a 10-minute walk of a greenway is 10% in District B, which is, which is half or even more than half of what it is in other districts. And so I wanted to understand why there aren't more projects being identified for District B, particularly since District B, 61% of the district identify as minority in the 2020 census. And so I'm concerned that we're not really achieving the health equity that we say we want to achieve.
Okay, we have staff at the podium ready to address this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Schiffbauer. I manage the Greenway Planning Design Program and Projects for the city. And to answer your question, we, in our analysis, we targeted, we didn't necessarily look at council districts to distribute these projects. We did an analysis that targeted access that we had more than a half a mile gap between access points. We looked at, we also, as a memo and backup state, we did include in the analysis which targeted the equity, the social equity and the level of service located near our park and greenways. And we also did look at the lower hanging fruit. We looked at projects that could be completed with more ease and constructability, that were feasible, have minimal easement acquisition needs, align with timing of other CIP projects, and projects that may have been prioritization and adopted, say corridor or small area plans. The social equity need in District B, we realize that there is a need for park experiences, but that need is going to be supported by larger, more significantly funded projects and not by the Neighborhood and Community Connections program. There are several greenway trails located in District B, which include 12 miles of the Neuse River Trail, Avett Creek and Wakefield Trail. There's 15 access points for the Neuse River Trail over a 12-mile span, and that provides an access point at approximately .8 miles, every .8 miles. Most of the communities along the Neuse do have access to the trail. About two years ago, we did finish a project called the Neuse Crossing Connector that was completed in 2019, where served a very large portion of communities in North Raleigh, Northeast Raleigh. And so as we, as I stated, as we realize that there is a need for additional park experiences, they're not necessarily going to be served by the Neighborhood and Community Connections program. It's a smaller program, not a lot of funding, and targeting the lower hanging fruit with a priority on social equity and level of service.
Okay, yeah, I understand. I mean, obviously, District B is not without amenities, there are amenities. But it still is a fact that only 10% of the District B population is within a 10-minute walk of a greenway, and only 19% is within a 10-minute walk of a park, which is what this connectors program is supposed to address. And $2 million is a significant amount of money. This isn't some change. So, I mean, my preference would be to go back and take a look at these opportunities in District B. As I said, you know, 61%, that's 60,000 people in District B are minority, and I don't really think that we're achieving the health equity that we claim that we want to achieve with this funding.
Mayor Pro Tem Stewart and then Councilmember Buffkin.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox, I hear your concerns. I wonder if, for today's purposes, it makes sense to move forward with this specific item? And in addition, should we be looking for additional funds to continue to chip away at that health equity gap, whether it's through federal funds that are coming down or state funds that may come that kind of meet the nexus of how we can better help get folks access to greenways and parks and improving their public health, and then also the climate resilience piece that we, fingers crossed, know is coming our way? So I wonder if there's future opportunities to make sure that we can adequately fund the needs that we see, and in the meantime, go ahead and move forward on this piece today that I think has probably been in the works for a little while.
Thank you. Councilmember Buffkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Schiffbauer, can you help me out? Is this, this is the same program that started with a grant from a private health-related organization. I saw it at the Parks Board three or four years ago. We put the policy in place, and now we're coming back with the funding to implement the recommendations. Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, you are.
Thank you for that. Well, that being the case, I concur with Mayor Pro Tem. This has been in the works for a long time, and as Ms. Schiffbauer said, the whole point of this was low hanging fruit, very small connections to make a big difference. Taking fences out, paving paths, making short connections so folks don't have to walk a half mile around to get to the greenway, and this has been going on a long time. I'm ready to move forward with authorizing the transfer of funds.
Hey, I think there's an opportunity too for us to look at this during the, our discussion on the bond. So I think there, and as Council, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart also stated, there could be potential for additional funding from the federal government. So I see Councilmember Branch had his hand raised.
Yeah, I was wondering if staff can also provide us in all of our districts based upon demographics, give us a demographic breakdown within our districts of where these parks and trails kind of go, because I think that is important information when we look at the data. I know District B has, a lot of it is outside of 540, where, you know, some of the demographics may be a little different than those, than the demographics that's within 540 near Capitol Boulevard area, Brentwood area, and, well, and I know we have the Green Road Park, we have Morris Creek and some other parks, but we still need to do more work. So if something, you know, I know you don't have it today, but if you can provide us that data so we can look at our parks, the demographics and trailway, I think that would be helpful, especially as we're moving forward and making sure that all of our citizens, and also addressing the socioeconomic, the social part, social racial part that Council Cox has brought up.
I think it would also be helpful to look at this through a lens of not just one district, but all districts.
Correct.
Through our city. So I think that Councilmember Buffkin indicated he was ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the transfer of funds listed in the memorandum included in our backup materials.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, all in favor. Anyone opposed? That was Councilmember Cox and Councilmember Ford. Okay, we have asked staff to come back to us with more data on all of the districts, and also let's look at opportunities for funding as we see more federal monies come in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ken Bowers from Planning and Development. We have several items to report out today. Waiting for the presentation. Just a heads up, one of the items, item number four on the agenda, will have to be deferred because the applicant was unable to submit sign conditions in time for today for this public hearing to be scheduled, but we anticipate you'll be able to act on it at your next So here's what's currently calendared for November 16th. Nothing is currently scheduled for December 7th, and I believe all of these items are recommending a December 7th hearing date. So first, we have a comp plan amendment, text change, two zoning cases, and one item to be deferred. So CP 421 is an amendment that's designed to represent or to reflect in the Conference of Plan and specifically our description of the low and moderate density land use categories, the recent changes to how residential land is zoned in Raleigh that were, that followed the adoption of TC 520. So the prior language in the comp plan, more oriented towards single-family and with density limits that have now been removed in favor of a lot dimensional standard, had to be updated. So this amends those categories, and it also reflects some of the other recent work and direction. We anticipate with this that Missing Middle 2.0 would not require further revisions. This is one item that we are representing or recommending for the November 16th hearing date, and this received a 7-0 vote from the Planning Commission to recommend approval. So unanimous. The next item, TC 621 Tiny Homes or Tiny Houses, amends the UDO to facilitate construction of tiny houses or small residential structures for single-unit living. The Planning Commission did recommend some significant revisions to the ordinance as it originally came to them. One of those revisions was the removal of the option for manufactured homes, which includes all mobile homes manufactured to the HUD standards, although there were some additional design standards included in the ordinance to qualify as tiny houses or for accessory doll units. Planning Commission, based on those changes, recommended a 7-0 vote. We are recommending a November 16th public hearing. The next item is Z 3921. This is at Zero Whitfield Road, it's off of Battle Bridge Road, so nearly 11 acres to be zoned from R 6 with conditions to R 10 with conditions. Consistent with the Conference of Plan, Planning Commission recommended approval on a 6-1 vote. There is a cemetery on the property in a condition which protects the cemetery, but the cemetery could be at risk to a future road widening, and that was the reason for the no vote on the item for the one commissioner. We're recommending December 7th for the public hearing for this zoning case. The next item, Hillsborough Street and Bagwell Avenue, this is a restory zone just over an acre from NX 4 and R 6 to CX 7 with shopfront and conditions, and RX 3, Urban Limited with conditions, that RX 3 applies only to the northern 57 feet of the property. It is consistent with the Conference of Plan and consistent with the future land use map. There is, the Planning Commission, there was a split vote. There is, was a significant discussion regarding the conformance of this with the Hillsborough and Cameron Village area plan. The area plan did not give specific height guidance for this site, but this does exceed the general height guidance in the, in Table LU 2 for the plan. Notwithstanding, due to conformance with other policies, the Planning Commission did on a 5-2 vote, finding consistent, recommend approval. We're recommending a December 7th public hearing date. The last item, and this is related to an annexation that you just approved on the consent agenda for public hearing, and we think that this could still align for December 7th, but it needs to wait for two weeks, is around 100 acres. It's currently in Wake County, outside of our ETJ, but contiguous with our city limits, rezoned to a combination of R 6 with conditions and general use R 6, consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map amendment, and Planning Commission recommended approval on a 6-1 vote. So that is, concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the first item, and that's the Missing Middle Housing. Hearing date of November 16, 2021, do we have a motion? Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, second. Councilmember Branch, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Councilmember Cox is opposed. Next is text change, TC 621 Tiny Homes. I have a question about this before we start. Ken, can you talk a little bit more about the manufactured homes? Does that also apply to, say, container homes or anything like that? Or is it specific towards manufactured homes on wheels? I'm a little confused about what this actually applies to and why.
It applies to anything, being the definition of a manufactured home that's under the HUD standards for manufactured homes, so commonly referred to as, you know, mobile homes sometimes. But in terms of tiny houses on wheels and that type, it would depend on the construction standard used. Some of those are, would be classified as RVs if they were constructed to the HUD code, they would be considered manufactured houses, and this is all separate from modular, which is a factory-built house that's assembled onsite on a permanent foundation. So I believe the concern with the Planning Commission was that they were concerned of the broadness of the definition of manufactured houses and did not feel that the design standards proposed in the ordinance were sufficient to address their concern.
Let me ask this, can we have a deeper discussion on this when we schedule this for public hearing? So there's more information.
You may. Staff can be prepared to give a very detailed discussion of the, of the different categories of houses that this, and types of structures that this would regulate and change the regulations for. I've discussed with the city attorney, we, and staff, please, we can be comfortable with wording the public hearing notice such that the ordinance can change should that discussion lead council to make modifications to the ordinance.
Okay, I'd rather have a larger discussion about this, just so we have clarity. Let me ask this too. I know that the General Assembly had passed some rules relating to design standards. Is that part of what the concern is here?
No, the, actually, the General Assembly took some years ago to modify the zoning authority as related to design standards for residential structures was limited to structures that are built under the one and two-family residential building code. And these manufactured homes are not built pursuant to that code, they're built under a different, different standard promulgated by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Councilmember Cox.
Yes, I would just like to ask that the hearing for this be held during an evening session in December.
I'll ask, Ken, was there a particular reason why you chose the 16th?
We have just, in order to balance workload, have been taking text changes, which do not require the same level of mail notice and scheduling them either in the middle of the month or two weeks hence, but there is no objection to scheduling it for December 7th. As we said right now, that hearing slots are empty, so there is certainly room for it. We'll see what we get out of the Planning Commission at your next meeting, but we can deal with that at the time.
Okay, that would, might also give you a little more time to prepare.
Yeah.
For a broader discussion. Okay. Do we have, and we have Councilmember Melton who has joined us. Thank you, and congratulations. So do we have a motion to schedule this for December 7th? Councilmember Branch has made that motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Cox is seconded, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z 3921, and this was also recommended for December 7th. Do we have a motion? It's going to be a long day, folks, if we're not participating. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Branch, seconded by Councilmember Cox, all in favor? Okay, that was unanimous, thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z 6820, Hillsborough Street and Bagwell Avenue. This was scheduled, recommended for December 7th. Do we have a motion to approve that hearing?
Now, I have a comment, Madam Mayor. I've, I've received a number of emails and phone calls from folks in that community about this project for a while, and certainly after the last Planning Commission meeting. I think there's a lot of concern from folks in the community about the number of stories based on the discussions with the development of the small area plan, that the height limit should be, I think, four stories, and the applicant is proposing seven stories. And some of the folks who've reached out to me are people who participated in the small area plan development over the, I think it's about three years ago that the city undertook that. So to me, I think we need an opportunity to have more conversation about the, about this particular rezoning, and so it would be my motion to actually move this to safe, vibrant and healthy neighborhoods to continue that discussion.
Hey, my understanding from what staff just said is the area plan does not give guidance for this particular parcel.
Well, I think there's some misunderstanding with some of the folks who participated in the development of that small area plan, because they are under the impression that it's capped at four stories.
Could Mr. Bowers address that, please?
So the, the area plan map makes some specific recommendations for height on some specific sites within its boundaries, but not others. So there is not a specific recommendation here. So what this means is that that defaults to the generalized height guidance that's contained within the comp plan's land use element for areas that are mapped like this one is for neighborhood mixed use, which I believe, I don't have the plan in front of me, is generally a height limit of four, maybe five stories if some special conditions are met at the, and so there's a matter of interpretation. But I believe that's where that comes from, is because the plan did not specifically recommend exceeding the height as recommended in Table LU 2 of land use element, and this defaults to that, and depending on how you read those criteria, it's four or five.
I have a follow-up. Mr. Bowers, when you look at all of the other development on Hillsborough Street along that corridor, the other developments are capped at four to five stories. Is that correct, as far as you know?
Um, I'm seeing some head shakes. I believe that is true for many developments, but not all. I can think of at least one seven-story rezoning for a project that you're probably quite familiar with, at the top of the hill, on the old side of Two Guys Pizza that, that started and never finished, that actually is not, never going to use its height allocation based on current plans, development plans for that site, but it was rezoned for seven stories. There may be another example, what? Aloft Hotel, obviously further down towards the Bell Tower, and also, I believe, the site next to the noodle shop, the noodle restaurant, David's Noodle Restaurant.
But in that immediate area...
Higher. In this general location, though, I'm not aware of any seven stories.
Okay, and that was going to be my follow-up, because in this immediate area, you've got the roundabout, you've got several dense projects on that Hillsborough Street corridor that are four or five stories. So this would be the first one, it would be seven stories on that in the Hillsborough, and also nestled in a, a single-family neighborhood. Is that correct?
Are you certain? I'm being, I'm not, I'm sorry. What? I think, I'm sorry, we're having a little discussion here.
And what I was saying...
We can provide more precise information on the zoning up and down the corridor, especially particularly if it goes into committee and you want to discuss it in greater detail.
Well, and given that, the little conversation we're having here now, there seems to be a lack of clarity about that particular area in the community, so I think it almost reinforces my motion to move it into safe, vibrant and healthy neighborhoods, so we can have a more in-depth conversation about it, and certainly folks in the community can get a better understanding of what they think they bargained for when they develop a small area plan. So I do my motion to, to move it to safe, vibrant and healthy neighborhoods.
Councilmember Ford, I would recommend that we hold the public hearing in a meeting. We move this back. There's a lot more information that you're probably not privy to about the small area plan and the changes that were made at the table at the last minute after a two-year process. So I, I think that there might be some additional information that would be helpful for you to hear.
Well, and I, I think having that information come out in the committee meeting before we get to a public hearing is probably the more appropriate place to have that conversation, not once we're under the gun at a public hearing. And so to me, if there's more information, and, you know, clearly, the folks who live in that area are operating under different information than the planning department and, and other folks, and so certainly having that conversation in the committee hearing would be the appropriate place to have it, and then flush everything out before we forward a public hearing. So again, I'm renewing my motion.
Now second that motion.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Any changes made in the public hearing, I mean, in the committee, will we have to wait until the public hearing to implement them? Or would they have to be, or would they be implemented then, and then we would have to set a public hearing on those changes? Like, what's, that's my only question, because if something comes out of it and we haven't had the public hearing, I'm just trying to understand when those changes could be implemented, if any come about.
So the window of opportunity that is before you is you have received the report of Planning Commission, and you have not scheduled the public hearing. So in, in between those two time periods, the conditions can change. Once you set a date for the public hearing, then you go to public hearing with the conditions as they existed at the time you set that date. After the public hearing is closed, there's a 30-day window to change the conditions. So I hope that answers your question.
Second.
So I'm just going to say, I think this is a really bad precedent to send things to committee before we have a public hearing. The public hearing is the official hearing on this matter, so I am not going to support this. However, I would entertain it after the public hearing, based on what we hear and what we learn. As I said, I think it's a really bad precedent, so I will not be supporting this. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, opposed. Okay, that is a 5-3 vote, and it was myself, Councilmember Melton, and Councilmember Stewart in opposition. I will say this, holding items... I will say this, holding items in committee for months was a practice of the former council. I don't want to see us doing that. It's not good governance. So, I'm just gonna say that beforehand. Thank you. All right, and now we have Z twenty-eight, and that was set, um, recommended for November sixteenth, I believe? Was that accurate?
I'm sorry, I was being asked another question. Can you repeat?
Oh, Z twenty-eight, set recommended date for November sixteenth? Is that accurate for December seventh?
Z sixty-eight. It's like a Z twenty-eight?
Yes, Z twenty-eight.
Yes, so the request for Z twenty-eight, since, since you're not able to schedule a public hearing, is to hold it to your next meeting? Which would be December, I mean, November sixteenth?
As I understand, it would be placed on as a special item to consider setting a public hearing at the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. And next, we have, um, special items. This is rezoning Z twenty-six. Oh, Milburn Road.
Good afternoon. This public hearing was held and closed during your last meeting on October nineteenth to allow for some revised conditions, and those have been offered. And so the question in front of you today is if you want to act on this. So, the new condition, um, specifies, uh, an acre area to be used exclusively for non-residential uses, uh, and those would be civic and open space uses, um, such as a park, a community center, a community garden, some kind of gathering space, um, and that it would be managed by the homeowners association. So, this is something that the applicant forecasted for you during the public hearing. I believe the applicant is available by phone if you have questions about this. And so the question for you today is just whether or not you want to act today or defer action further. What questions can I answer for you?
Do we have any questions for... No questions? Looks like we are ready then to, um... To vote.
Madam Mayor, um, yeah, I believe that plan has addressed the concerns that came about, um, with those conditions. So, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated November second, twenty-twenty-one, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adopted effective dates described in the agenda items under recommended action.
Okay, do we have a second? Mayor Perterm Stewart has seconded. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes, um, unanimous clerk. Next, we have rezoning Z forty-twenty-one, um, Lewisburg Road.
Yes, ma'am. This was in front of you during the October nineteenth meeting as part of the report of the Planning Commission. The applicant asked for a deferral so they could provide some revised conditions. They have done that. I, I want to, uh, make note of two issues that I'm aware of. The council may be aware of others. I know Mr. Cox has asked, uh, several questions about this case in terms of, um, the, about the frontage and also about, uh, visibility from elsewhere nearby to the site. Uh, we are working to be able to provide that information at the time of the public hearing, whenever that may be. And then I also understand, uh, that there's interest in an additional condition beyond the new ones that have been offered. So, I think that is about, uh, offering a charging station for electric vehicles. You could set the hearing today, and those could be offered before the hearing, or you could hold the case and have additional conditions brought forward before you take action. I just will note that the, um, conditions that have been offered since you last saw this address planting along the Lewisburg Road frontage. I would note that, uh, maybe about a third of that frontage, uh, is in floodplains, floodway, or floodway fringe, whatever you want to call it. Um, and that area is largely addressed by an easement, but there is a good portion of the property, about two-thirds along the, um, Lewisburg Road frontage that this condition would address. Um, and it, it basically specifies replanting in the event of grading, uh, which is likely. And then they have also provided a condition that requires notification about development in the Greenway easement area to the easement holders. So, happy to answer any questions you might have about that. Again, your options today would be, uh, to defer action, to allow additional conditions to be offered, or you could, um, set the hearing and make clear if there are conditions you'd like to see offered before the hearing takes place. As long as those conditions are more restrictive, they could be offered.
Councilmember Cox?
Yes, for this particular case, we've received a lot of emails, uh, from people that are concerned about this project's impact on the Lees River and Horseshoe Farm Park. And, uh, regardless of whenever we set the hearing, I am going to be requesting, we send this to, uh, committee. Probably it makes sense to go to GNR so that we can have a, a greater hearing from the public about their concerns, uh, for the environment and for Horseshoe Farm Park, uh, before we finalize this case. I'm fine as far as, uh, setting a hearing, uh, I have a preference for an evening hearing because of the large interest in this case, and, um, and I'm open to, uh, suggestions.
Um, Council, uh, Mayor Perterm Stewart?
Thank you. Um, I have, um, I was the one who talked to the applicant about adding an additional condition around, um, EV chargers. Um, and so I think we can both meet, um, Councilmember Cox's interest in having a evening meeting, um, as well as getting this new condition in before then, if we hold this at the table, um, and schedule it, um, mid-November, our mid-November meeting. So, I'd, I'd like to offer that we do that for now.
That, that's fine with me, Ms. Warren. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Perterm Stewart, could you say, um, could you make a motion?
Assuming we need a motion, I'd move that we hold this item at the table until our next meeting to schedule it at that time.
Okay, seconded by, um, Councilmember Melton. All in favor... Um, Councilmember Knight, you have a question?
I appreciate, uh, Councilor Cox being, uh, transparent and forecasting that he's gonna ask to send this to committee. I think this does bring up, uh, um, we need to look at maybe trying to figure out a more formalized protocol for if we're gonna, uh, the trend's gonna be that we send items, uh, to committee, rezoning, uh, items to committee. What, what, because that's somewhat different, right, or changed than this council has been working under so far. And, uh, so I think that's something we need to think about. I'm not sure where that would be, where would be the best place for us to figure that out. Just so we all do know, going into a rezoning, that, that, that may be a, uh, an option, that it would go to committee if it meets a certain standard or a certain status or some, something like that. But I do think we need something like that if, um, we're gonna go forward like this. Thanks.
Okay, um, so we have, um, we're holding this at the table. Could we have a show of hands in favor? Okay, that's unanimous clerk. Next, we have text change twelve-twenty-one, accessory commercial units.
Good afternoon. I'm John Anagnos from Planning and Development. This text change is, uh, came out of the Economic Development and Innovation Committee a few months back, earlier this summer. Uh, next slide, please. And so you had requested this returned to the city council prior to it being referred to the Planning Commission. So, I have here for you today a, a brief summary of what the text change includes, and then laying out an outreach plan that Planning and Development staff will conduct prior to the Planning Commission starting its review. Uh, and so again, to remind you, the goal of this text change was to allow commercial units in residential structures in residential districts, so additional opportunities for retail and other commercial uses in neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So, there are three uses in the UDO that are similar to this concept of the accessory commercial unit. Those are home occupation, live-work, and home daycare. Two of those are contained in a section of Chapter Six that is, uh, specifically oriented towards special accessory uses. Home daycare is just listed as a principal use in Chapter Six. And I'll talk about why that's important in a moment. Next slide, please. The home occupation is, has a, a set of use standards that are defined in the UDO, and the intent of them is largely that the use, uh, the commercial use that's in the residential building would not even be known to be, be taking place from the outside. So, no signage, no parking, no employees. Uh, is basically, if you were walking by, you should not know that there is a business being conducted there. Uh, so very restrictive, but does not require a special use permit, uh, just a, a regular zoning permit which can be approved by staff. Next slide, please. A more advanced form of the existing accessory commercial use, uh, excuse me, an accessory use that's already allowed is called live-work. And live-work does require a special use permit, so that requires going to the Board of Adjustment, but in return for that special use permit, there are additional business features that can be present on the outside of the building. So, that includes parking, there can be employees that come to the business, and, and there can be signage. Uh, next slide, please. And then home daycare. So, home daycare kind of lives separately in the code. TC twelve-twenty-one will not affect home daycare, but I just wanted, wanted you to know that it does exist and would remain a viable, uh, home business for people who would like to pursue that, and existing home daycares would remain with the same standards. Uh, next slide, please. So, the way that TC twelve-twenty-one approaches these uses is to essentially remove the special use permit requirement for live-work, and by doing that, that makes home occupation somewhat redundant with live-work. Uh, so, live-work allow, is, is more lenient or less restrictive than home occupation, and what made them different was the requirement of a special use permit. So, in drafting this ordinance, we, staff wanted to make sure there was consistent level of regulation and consistent level of permitting across the spectrum of accessory commercial uses. And so, our proposal is to remove the special use permit requirement for live-work, and by, by making home occupation redundant, it's no longer necessary to have a home occupation in the code, uh, and so this would actually, the proposed ordinance would remove home occupation entirely, uh, because it'd be totally superseded by live-work. And then, after doing those two things, add a new defined accessory use called accessory commercial unit that would follow live-work in that section of Chapter Six. Next slide, please. So, this is just kind of diagramming what that looks like in the code. So, this is the current state of the code. You have this Section six point seven point three that lists these accessory uses. Next slide. And so what this ordinance is proposing to do is to modify it as shown. So, removing home occupation, removing the special use require, uh, special use permit requirement for live-work, and then adding accessory commercial units. Next slide, please. So, there are a couple other changes to live-work that went along with removing the special use permit. Uh, so, one of the things we wanted to do is explicitly allow them in accessory structures. The way that the accessory, uh, structure code is written now, it's not entirely clear whether they would be allowed. So, this does explicitly say you could have, uh, an accessory, uh, excuse me, a live-work use in an accessory structure. And then, removing the cap on customers, which is currently set to five, uh, that would be set by the fire code, which is basically based on the, the amount of square footage of the business. And then, the allowed uses that are listed currently are not based on the definitions in Chapter Six. They're sort of defined, uh, in a special way. So, we wanted to make sure that's consistent. Next slide, please. All right, so that's a, a lot of sort of, um, housekeeping to make sure that, uh, as we add this new use, everything that came before it is consistent and leads up to it in a, in a predictable way. And so this is basically the new use that you have requested, accessory commercial unit. And so I'm gonna go through the standards there. Uh, and so basically what we have is the allowed uses in this accessory commercial unit, and so this would be in the principal structure in a residential district on a residential lot. So, hypothetically, could be a detached house. You could establish one of these uses. Uh, just to give you some examples of what these mean, indoor recreation could be something like a dance academy, yoga studio. Those things typically fall into that category. Personal service could be, uh, a hair salon or nail salon, uh, some typical uses there. And then I think the others are, are pretty self-explanatory. So, uh, the standards say you could not have this in accessory structure. You can only have one per lot. You must have the residential principal use occupied, so you can't say that that use has lapsed and the commercial use would remain. Uh, so it does have to be accessory to that principal residential use. Uh, there's a maximum size, uh, limits to hours of occup, of operation. Next slide, please. A few more site features that are required, so pedestrian access, there is no outdoor seating allowed, regulation of lighting, service areas, and mechanical equipment. Uh, there is an allowance that you can have outdoor display in the draft ordinance of up to fifty square feet, but not outdoor storage. And the next slide will show an image of what outdoor display might look like. So, this would be something showing products which the customer would then need to enter the building to purchase. So, these could not be left out at night. Uh, these would have to be stored indoors at night. Next slide, please. No vehicle parking would be required, but two short-term bicycle parking spaces would be required. That essentially means a bicycle rack, uh, and then one building sign would be allowed per street frontage, and you could have a vehicle associated with the business parked on the site. Next slide, please. Uh, so the accessory dwelling unit standards don't make it clear whether you can have a business in, uh, an accessory structure containing an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, and so, uh, basically this is attempting to clarify that a little bit through TC twelve-twenty-one, that you could have live-work but not an accessory commercial unit. Next slide, please. And so this is a table summarizing all of these standards. Uh, I won't go through all of these, but I think the next slide is helpful in kind of summarizing. So, home occupation going away, special use permit for live-work going away, and then additional restrictions on the accessory commercial unit. Next slide, please. Here's a comparison of the allowed uses in each of these accessory uses. Uh, so again, I just want to point out the, some, some difference between what's listed in the existing live-work standard and what's actually the definitions and titles that occur elsewhere in Chapter Six. So, part of this would be just making that all standardized, the same definitions and names, uh, for applying in, in that situation, and then expanding that a little bit for accessory commercial unit to include restaurant. Uh, next slide, please. So, as I mentioned at the beginning, this item did originate in the Economic Development and Innovation Committee where there was a lot of conversation about the ability of uses like this to support food access in neighborhoods where there may not be a grocery store or other fresh or healthy food provider nearby. Uh, and so that was what we were thinking of a lot of times when we were drafting these standards. But we also looked at these and said, uh, typically when we are writing zoning regulations, if there's an instance where a more commercial or more intense commercial use is allowed in a district or is allowed in a particular context, then it's reasonable to include less intense commercial uses in that same context. And so that's why you see office being included in the allowed uses in ACUs here, even though that wasn't a specific conversation in the council committee, uh, but that it's, it's reasonable, reasonable to expect that if a retail shop or restaurant could be established with managed impacts to the surrounding area, an office could as well. And that would also support other goals of, of the comprehensive plan, such as walkability and reduction of, of carbon emissions. Uh, and I'll also note the potential of office uses in particular to address inequities in access to financial services and the like. I do want to remark that it is very difficult for zoning to control the actual products that are sold in retail and restaurant uses. So, while the council committee conversation was focused on food access, uh, it is difficult for the city either to require fresh and healthy food in a retail outlet, or to prohibit things that are less desirable products, such as alcohol or tobacco or vapor products. So, those things, uh, are not necessarily the appropriate realm for zoning. Uh, so I just want to caution on, on that note that we didn't have a, a lot written into this ordinance, uh, within that respect. Next slide, please. So, this, uh, the, the choice before you today is whether to refer this to the Planning Commission or hold it for further discussion. Uh, prior to Planning Commission starting their review of this, staff is proposing an expanded public outreach program, which would include two Ask a Planner meetings. Those would both be hybrid meetings, uh, including an, an in-person and virtual component to be conducted simultaneously, uh, and then the standard text change review requirements, which includes web posting, the engagement... And then the standard text change review requirements, which includes web posting, engagement portal, and insertion into the newspaper. Next slide, please. And for the Ask a Planner meetings, we are also proposing to work with housing neighborhoods as well as council staff to make sure that those are advertised to a number of different neighborhood groups, as you can see here. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. As you know, there was considerable conversation, the Economic Development and Innovation Committee regarding this. I just want to remind everybody, if we send this to Planning Commission, this comes back to us. This is the start of the process. I appreciate the fact that staff is going to do extra outreach. But really, this is an attempt to provide services to communities that are in food deserts, communities that have been negatively impacted by a lack of goods and services. And that's what we're trying to do with this case. So I would ask to, that we refer the item to the Planning Commission. I guess we need to make a motion to do that. So if that's the case, I will make a motion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll second your motion. I have community gardens in my district, and this is solving something of a problem that they've run afoul of on a number of occasions, trying to get fresh food into the community. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. So do we have, okay, vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, anyone opposed? Councilmember Cox is opposed. I would like to just thank Councilmember Melton for kind of leading the charge on this in E D I and helping to move this forward. And thank you. Next, we have voter participation education engagement strategy.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, members of council, and the residents of Raleigh. Taysha Hinton, you're a community engagement manager, and we'll have the slides up in just a moment. Okay, so I will be before you briefly today to present a proposed strategy in response to the study group's recommendations on council terms, compensation, and engagement. As you may recall, during your October twelfth work session, you were presented with the final report from the study group. And I'll just take a brief moment to highlight those recommendations. The first was that council transition from two-year to four-year term. The second was that council adopt staggered terms, where district council members are elected on one side of the cycle, and the mayor and any at-large council members are elected on the other side of the cycle. The third was that compensation be increased for both mayor and council. The fourth recommendation was that council move elections to even years to spur a greater voter turnout. The fifth was that council direct staff to develop a comprehensive voter engagement program. And then the sixth recommendation being that council size increase in its size, excuse me, from its size to nine by adding one district seat. So the first half of the presentation will cover terms, compensation, and structure. So our goal here would be to provide residents with objective information about each of the study group's recommendations, obtaining their input and keeping them informed throughout this process. We'd also want to provide feedback on how public input influenced our decision-making once we arrived to that point, and then provide a variety of opportunities to provide feedback. So we've talked about taking the full report and convincing it to frequently ask questions, having one-page fact sheets, adding to our website the explanation of the recommendations, water bill inserts, and things of that nature. When we talk about strategy, we are proposing a minimum of three listening sessions is what we're going to call them. We would have them both in-person and virtual with a more informal format, which I'll talk about in a moment. And really, that's just short presentations and creating the opportunity to dialogue and conversations about the recommendations and what they would look like in practice. Staff is also recommending an additional public comment period at a future work session as well. We've also strategized about creating multiple opportunities for the public to provide input specific to terms, council terms, compensation, and structure. And so we would create surveys that can be accessed via text message, via phone, email, online, a Q R code, having physical posters in public spaces that share with the public more information about the recommendations and how they can get involved in those. For example, at our listening sessions, the photo on the left was used with planning stroll in the streets a couple of weeks ago. And this was an informal way for residents to prioritize their ideas. And then the photo on the left is also an example as to what we would use at our listening sessions. The next half is going to talk about a voter education program. Staff evaluated all of the recommendations that the study group provided in their report. And the strategies that you'll see in the next couple of slides is informed by many of those recommendations. Staff is of the opinion that the recommendation five, which we'll talk about in a moment, that the spirit of that recommendation is a voter education program. And the goals of that voter education program are listed here, to provide residents with balance and objective information to assist in their decision-making, and to help residents become active and informed voters. So in collaboration with the communications team, here is our proposed strategy, that we have voter resource guides that are physical and printed for distribution at community centers, community events, that all departments would utilize in helping us get the word out, the creation of a voter education tab on the city's website, so prominent alerts on the website, and a page dedicated to education awareness. We would also establish a voter education option through Gov. Delivery, and those subscribers would receive information on important dates related to the local election. We would leverage social media to remind residents of early voting, voting hours, things of that nature. Currently, when a resident goes online to see, for example, which district they may reside in or what day their garbage collection takes place, there's also the option to see your voting precinct, and also drive directions to that precinct. So we would just enhance the awareness of that so that it's one less step that residents have to take to find this information. We would continue the promotion of free bus transportation on Election Day. We've been doing that since 2018, and currently, we're operating and offering free fares. We would also have a P S A campaign with community groups. I've been in conversations with the contact at the Board of Elections to host voter registration drives and share candidate information as well. As far as offline outreach, we also want to do direct mailing through bill inserts and newsletters, and then the utilization of R T N Raleigh Television Network to have animated graphics with voter information, polling locations as commercials on R T N. The Office of Community Engagement is currently brainstorming options with the Fleet Services Division to bring a sort of mobile engagement to life, which we're excited about. It would increase awareness of city services. It would provide us with the ability to connect with the residents and provide information and services on the go. This form of mobile engagement would be housed in the Office of Community Engagement, but available across departments for their use as well. And the photo here is an example of the City of Durham's model, which they named Durham City Hall on the go. So we find a creative name and bring this to life. Next step, we would begin the input for terms, compensation, and structure in November through January of twenty-two, and then we will begin our voter education program in January of twenty-two through October twenty-two. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Cox?
Yes, I think what you've presented looks pretty good. I'm concerned about only three listening sessions. Yeah, I find when there are only three listening sessions, they just don't reach, they just don't seem to have the reach to, I mean, Raleigh is a hundred and forty-four square miles with many, many neighborhoods. And so three listening sessions really wouldn't give us much of a chance to really listen to our citizens. And I would encourage having more listening sessions. I could easily see three listening sessions in District B alone, just because of the geographic size of the district. And so my recommendation would be to increase the number of listening sessions.
Councilmember Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. I find myself offering the opposite recommendation. Listening is important, hearing from people is important, but this has been going on a long time. And just yesterday, our county commissioners extended their terms, and I understand they're considering increasing their salaries as well. Durham did it a couple of weeks ago. Charlotte did it recently. So we find ourselves solidly in the modern trend among big cities and big counties. Our people are solidly behind this. We've had a study group that looked at it for months and months and months. I'm not sure that three might not be too much. You know, there's a time to listen, but then there's a time to decide and a time to act. And I think we're getting very close to the time to decide and act what's best for Raleigh in the twenty-first century. Although I do appreciate the work that's been put into this, glad to see it go ahead. But I could not support additional delay and talking about it. It's time to make a decision.
Councilmember Cox?
I mean, I don't like having to refute Councilmember Buffkin, but the study group held no listening sessions. There were no listening sessions. There was no public engagement. The chair of the study group said as much publicly. And to go forward, you know, with a minimal of three listening sessions, I mean, yeah, we're a big city. But you know, big cities don't throw out democracy. They don't throw out engaging with their citizens. In fact, they embrace it even more if they're really a great city. And I would say, if we want to be a great city and not just a big city, then we really need to engage with our citizens.
Okay, thank you. Taysha, I think you have something very comprehensive there. This, my understanding is this is the first time you're bringing this to us, but there'll be additional detail as we move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, so this is an initial, like, first stab. We'll be getting more information from you.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Miss Hinton, welcome, and thanks for joining the team and looking forward to working with you more. You may have mentioned this, and I missed it. I was a little distracted at one point during your presentation. I appreciate your presentation. I too agree that it is comprehensive in terms of what you're looking for the city to do. I understand there is some time constraints that we will have to meet to be able to do these things during the next election cycle. And you, again, you may have mentioned these, but I missed it. Could you repeat if, what time constraints or deadlines that we do need to keep in mind? Thank you.
Sure. So our office was in conversation with the city attorney to talk about those deadlines. And if that's okay, I defer to her, just to make sure I don't misspeak.
Yeah, I think that if you want to make a change, you may remember, we've talked about this in the past, there's a couple of scenarios. If council makes a change and decides to put it on the ballot, that's one thing that could happen, and that would be on a November ballot. If council wants to make a change and not be on the ballot, I think you can make that as late as the spring. But keep in mind that if there was a petition asking for a referendum that had the requisite number of signatures, it could force that to the ballot in twenty-twenty-two. So as long as the changes are made by, and we can get exact dates, probably April or May, we could get it on the, it would be applicable in November unless there was a referendum that put it on for the ballot, in which case it would be bumped to twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. So for now, let's continue and move this forward and bring this back to council when there's more detail to provide to us. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I like the creativity that you're showing and demonstrating. So keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our report and recommendation to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and happy November. Where has the year gone? It is slowly getting away from us. But with that, we have two items on the manager's report today, and then I have a simple request of council at the conclusion of those two items. Both items are ARPA-related, and we will kick it off with Assistant City Manager Evan Raleigh, who will give us an update on the Carolina Small Business Development Fund, who will be handling some of our ARPA funds.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. So if you will recall, back in September, your September twenty-first meeting, you authorized a partnership between the city and Carolina Small Business Development Fund to administer five million dollars of the city's allocation of ARPA funds. And so staff has been working over the course of the last several weeks to flesh out a proposal, which you have before you today on the administration, the proposed administration of those five million dollars in small business assistance funds. So I will turn over the podium to Mr. Kevin Dick, who is the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Carolina Small Business Development Fund, to review the proposal with you. And if you like what you hear today, we would be asking for your blessing to proceed as will be outlined here shortly. So with that, I will turn the podium over.
Thank you so much, Evan, and good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. As I was preparing for this meeting and checking my calendar, I realized that this presentation is exactly nine months after the last presentation you received from Carolina Small Business Development Fund. And so we're really happy to be back in front of you, and we want to really talk about the opportunity to help small businesses not only survive, but sustain. And that's what we think the Oak City Biz Labs proposal represents. Next slide, please. And so just a little bit about Carolina Small Business Development Fund, or you may hear me say C S B D F. We regard ourselves as dream catchers. We want to catch the dreams of entrepreneurs and small businesses as they seek to start, grow, and sustain. And we are a community development financial institution. That means we are chartered by the U.S. Department of Treasury to provide financial assistance, technical assistance, or capacity building help to small businesses. And in addition to those two things, we also do a lot of policy and research around why small businesses are important to North Carolina's economy, and also the effects that events like the pandemic can have on small businesses. And you can see a few statistics on this slide. We definitely specialize in equitable capital access. Over nearly sixty percent of the business owners who have, or the businesses that have received funding from Carolina Small Business Development Fund are businesses that are owned by people of color. Nearly forty percent have been women-owned. You can see the statistics on veteran-owned businesses as well, almost twenty percent. And since two thousand and eleven, we have delivered over eleven hundred loans and over a thousand grants to North Carolina's small businesses. Can also see the statistics on our technical assistance, or what we deem to be holistic business advising, as well as the policy research and advocacy work that is as well as the policy research and advocacy work that is recognized nationally. Next slide. Just a little bit about the, the Raleigh Small Business Relief Fund, um, particularly for any council members that may not have been, uh, on council, um, during the last time we presented. Um, this was obviously, um, a, a, a very, a rapid-fire effort by, uh, Madam Mayor, you and the city council to get funding out to small businesses in the city of Raleigh to basically help them survive. Really structure a program that would be put into place, uh, prior to programs like, uh, PPP and EIDL, um, that were, uh, promulgated by the SBA. And so, um, the, the city responded, um, also called upon the private sector to, to step up and provide resources to these small businesses. And Carolina Small Business Development Fund was, was very proud to work alongside the city in partnering on this effort. Um, you can see, um, that, again, that the emphasis here was for survival, particularly of Main Street businesses. Um, and the program, um, was designed to bridge funding until COVID-19 or through COVID-19 until other resources could be, um, resourced by small businesses. Want to bring special attention to the last three bullet points on this slide. There were 584 total applicants, uh, and funding was, was enough to, uh, uh, provide resources to 201. So that meant there were 383 unfunded applicants or a significant amount of unmet demand, hence the need for the program proposal that we're discussing today. And you can see there was a range of 2.6 to 3.8 million dollars, um, in, in terms of a range of unmet demand. Next slide, please. The program results, as I said, 201 businesses were funded. Um, the average grant award was just under $7,000, uh, over 1.4 million. And the private sector contributions were very important. Uh, basically it extended the ability of the program to provide resources to 80 businesses that it would not have, um, if not for the private sector contributions. Um, and you can see, uh, the program statistics, uh, really reflected diversity. So, um, over 40%, uh, 43, uh, to be exact, women-owned businesses, over 25% of businesses owned by people of color, and, uh, over 36% of business owners identifying themselves as low to moderate income. Next slide, please. And numbers tell one story, but, um, great testimonials like this tell, um, an even more compelling story. And so, uh, we did, um, we were able to provide funding to Headquarters Barbershop, um, as one of those 201, um, located on Capitol Boulevard, owned by Jimmy Evans. And, um, Jimmy gives a great haircut, I can say that, um, um, have, with my, with my own personal experience. Um, next slide, please. And so again, uh, we've talked about survival. Now let's talk about sustainability. Uh, Oak City Biz Labs is, is the, the name that, that we have, um, gotten, uh, we, we've conferred with, uh, city staff on to, to see if we could really make a, uh, have a marketable way to get the word out to small businesses. And we talked about, um, really wanting s- small businesses to not just survive, but scale and thrive. And what this represents is a new model of tying financial assistance more closely to technical assistance. And so those are two forms of capital, financial capital and then knowledge capital, right? And then what we would want to do also is embed the social capital. And, and, and I'll explain a little bit more about what that means. But we know that the city wants businesses to last in order to meet a few, um, really significant objectives. So first of all, we want to make sure that the, the ta- the sales tax base is sustained and that it grows. Secondly, we want to maintain the character of neighborhoods and corridors. And we know that small businesses are, are really catalysts for providing that character. Thirdly, we want to avoid blight. We don't want, um, you know, businesses to, to be boarded up and closed and, and really, um, you know, reflect poorly upon the neighborhoods in which they're located. And finally, fourth, want to create and retain jobs. Uh, we've all heard statistics about, um, the, the types of impacts that small businesses in not only our local economy, but nationally, the types of impacts they have on job creation. Uh, statistics may say is, is many as 67% of the jobs in this country, uh, are in small businesses. And so we need to make sure that those are created and retained. Next slide, please. So the plan would consist of, again, um, and not just financial assistance, but this time more technical assistance. And, and that technical assistance would not really deliver, um, under the Raleigh Small Business Relief Fund because the emphasis was more on just helping businesses to survive, right? So with this program, we would conduct, conduct business assessments. We would really look at what businesses need to, um, to, to really address their pain points and really, uh, survive and thrive. But we would still be providing initial access to financial capital. So we recognize that businesses have different needs. We also recognize that under the, the ARPA program that the city has a desire to get funding out as quickly as possible. And so what we would do after, you know, a minimal amount of, um, of, of criteria in terms of, of paperwork, businesses, um, could have their applications processed and be eligible for a max of $10,000, just like, just as was the case in the, the Raleigh Small Business Relief Fund. But in this case, there would be the opportunity for businesses to draw down an additional 20,000 if the business com- uh, executes on a technical assistance plan that would be, um, created based upon their completion of a request for business assistance form. So in other words, we, we'd be able to provide customized technical assistance plans to each business that agrees to, um, complete the request for business assistance form. And then those businesses could work with our staff and partners to come up with that customized plan. And, and that would enable the business to draw down an additional, uh, 20, max of $20,000. Further, if a business needed additional capital on top of 30,000, so for example, if we had a trucking company that certainly could benefit from $30,000 in grant capital, but maybe needed to scale, maybe needed to lease equipment, um, uh, bring on additional, uh, people, um, invest in some working capital, they could also be eligible for lending capital from CSBDF. And so, for example, if they got a $30,000 grant, but really needed $200,000 in capital, they could get an additional 170,000 in low interest, in a low-interest loan from CSBDF. And this would all, we, we know this based upon the technical assistance planning we would do with the business. I should point out, however, that there would be no obligation. So this would just be a, a choice and another alternative for businesses in need of even additional capital. And it would be a private sector leverage to the capital that the, the city would be providing through ARPA funds. Next slide, please. Just in terms of a few criteria for the program, we want businesses located, obviously, in the city of Raleigh with 49 employees or fewer. We want businesses that are locally and independently owned. That was, uh, also, uh, a criterion of the first program. Uh, businesses with annual revenue of less than 5 million. And finally, businesses with no bankruptcies, tax liens, or open judgments. And the objective there would be to make sure that the, the grant monies were not going, you know, really, um, addressing issues that did not necessarily speak to business sustainability, but, but really just speak to, you know, uh, throwing good money after bed, uh, for, for lack of a better word. Um, next slide, please. And so the proposed schedule, um, if approved today, we believe that we could start, um, program outreach and promotion, um, through December and then, um, an additional week in January. We want to make sure that there is as much equitable access to this capital as possible and that we have time to reach businesses, um, in all corners of the city. Um, you know, various, uh, ethnic groups, various, uh, genders and races and so forth. We would keep the application window for businesses to apply open for two weeks. That would give businesses ample time to, to get paperwork and together and make sure that they could meet the criteria. Finally, we would process applications, um, between January 25th and February 28th. This would give us an opportunity to not only process, um, grant applications for those businesses that wanted the initial tranche only, only the, the max of $10,000, but also it would give us an opportunity to assess who really needed technical assistance. Um, and technical assistance can be defined, by the way, as marketing help, help with, um, looking over financial statements, help with understanding accounting software, um, you know, different sustainability and, and resiliency measures that businesses, uh, could take, particularly in the throes of a pandemic. And then we would look at, uh, dispersing between March, um, and, and June 30th. And I say no later than March because if there were businesses that were approved for the $10,000, we could start dispersing, uh, much sooner than March 1st. But we just want to make sure that there's ample time to review technical assistance plans. And then we would take that time period for dispersment. Um, and I also mentioned the technical assistance plans would be within that same window. We would look to, to do those in a two-month period between March and April. Next slide, please. Uh, continuing with the schedule, uh, we would, after those technical assistance plans, we will be dispersing grants to those that chose technical assistance, uh, again, uh, beginning no later than May 1st, um, and then, um, going, uh, through June 30th. Uh, and then really having an, an opportunity to, to debrief, um, with the city, um, confer on and report on lessons learned so that we could, um, refine and, and perfect if necessary to launch round two. Next slide, please. What do we project as outcomes? Uh, we believe that, uh, capital would be injected into businesses that may not have been served last year. And this is really important because we want to make sure that we are reaching, um, new businesses. So, um, uh, and just, just moving on, um, we think these outcomes would, um, allow us to reach at least 140 to 200 businesses, um, the three types of capital that I mentioned, and the opportunity to leverage capital more seamlessly. Um, and by sustaining businesses, we preserve neighborhood character, sales taxes, and jobs, as I said earlier. Next slide. And so, um, invite everyone to follow us on social media and certainly invite, uh, any questions, uh, if there are any from council, um, and staff. So, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Um, the last time we worked with you, you did an outstanding job. And I particularly valued the attention you paid to diversity, geographic diversity, and, um, just the inclusion of so many, um, business, small businesses, um, people, uh, minority businesses and women-owned businesses. So thank you, um, for that. Um, are there any questions? Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Dick, for the presentation. I appreciate it, uh, well done. I just got one thing, uh, a comment about page six, which is the, uh, the page right after, uh, Mr. Evans' testimonial. Um, some of that language struck me as a bit negative. And I would encourage y'all to look at that, look at that language and maybe, uh, use more positive language. And also, it may not be ordered in a certain way, but, you know, I think it's really about the individuals who are starting and trying to create these businesses. Um, so I think creation and re- retention of jobs, I think to me, would seem to be the priority. Um, I think the term avoiding blight, avoid, is a, is a bit, I don't know if that's the way we want to present this. Um, I think we could be more positive in what we're looking for. Uh, maintaining character of neighborhoods and corridors, I think hits that a little bit better. Um, the, the sales tax base, important. But again, I think we need to focus on the individuals that are coming forward and encour- helping to encourage them that this is something that we want to work within in partnership. So I, I would just ask y'all to take a look at that language, um, and, and, and maybe think about it, putting in a little bit of a, more of a positive, a spin on it. It may be federal language or in the federal forms, I don't know. But, uh, just something, uh, just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Knight. We'll take that into account.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, um, let's see, so we need a motion to approve. Mayor Perterm Stewart, seconded by, um, Councilmember Branch, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you so much for being with us today and, um, excited about the good work you're going to do for our business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Kate, next we have the Human Relations Commission. This is ARPA grant recommendations.
And so we have Mary Thompson, who is the chair of the Human Relations Commission, here to bring forward the recommendations of this round of grant funding. Um, Mr. Raleigh can introduce Ms. Mary.
Sure. Uh, Mayor, council, so before you in your, in your agenda item, you do have a set of the, uh, organizations that, uh, the Human Relations Commission has recommended for funding out of the $1 million that this council decided to appropriate to target, um, nonprofit organizations that were working to support, uh, low and moderate income, uh, individuals covering several different demographic groups back in the summer. Uh, so of course, we do have, uh, Chairman of the Human Relations Commission, Ms. Mary Thompson, it's here to answer any questions that you might have about the process. Uh, the HRC, uh, and, and the reviewers did recommend funding for 25, uh, different organizations. And again, that is information that was attached to the agenda. So, um, if you support, uh, the information that you have received, we'd just be looking for, uh, authorization for staff to move forward with executing contracts and agreements with those organizations. Certainly happy to answer any questions that, uh, council may have.
Um, I just want to say, I think that was excellent job that was done. The number of organizations represented, um, to, again, diversity of organizations, um, with different, um, areas of interest. So, um, is, are there any questions? This was all in backup. Councilmember Melton?
I don't have a question, but I'm on the board of directors for TLC and I see that they are in one of the recommendations. So I would need to be recused from, um, voting on that item.
Okay, I will make a motion to recuse, um, Councilmember Melton from, um, TLC, seconded by Mayor Perterm Stewart, all in favor? Okay, um, so do we have a motion then to approve the funding? It's outlined by the Human Relations Commission. Councilmember Branch? Um, seconded by Councilmember Knight? Um, guess what, Robyn?
With, with everything but the Tammy Lynn Center.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? All right, and now we will, um, that was unanimous clerk. Now we'll vote on the funding for the Tammy Lynn Center. Um, all in, do we have a motion? Councilmember Branch? Uh, second, Mayor Perterm Stewart, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Um, thank you to the Human Relations Commission for your good work on this.
So, Mayor, I have one, um, additional item under the manager's report.
Yes, ma'am.
You will recall that I committed to manage with a heart for the community that we serve. And what became abundantly clear for me through this process is there are a lot of nonprofit agencies doing a lot of good work in this community. And so while we were only able to fund a million dollars' worth of the requests, the, the demand was 3.5 million dollars. And with that, in looking at some of those agencies that were not funded, it is my respectful and humble request that you authorize me to work with my staff in the budget office and in the manager's office to stand up another million-dollar process to be able to provide some technical assistance for some of those agencies that may not have competed, um, in this process because of lack of having audits from a CPA or things of that nature, because their volume and their fundraising efforts aren't that great. So again, I think when you look at some of those agencies that were not funding, funded, they are doing phenomenal work in this community and work that is needed. So that is my humble request this afternoon.
I will make a motion to approve, um, Mayor- I will make a motion to approve. Mayor Perterm Stewart has seconded. Thank you for that, City Manager. Very much appreciated. And you're right, there are lots of nonprofits doing really good work in our community who really desperately need additional funding to carry out their mission.
Absolutely. Part of that commitment will allow us to provide some technical assistance and some capacity builder within those agencies so that as we move through other grant processes throughout the future, that they will be able to actually compete with some of our longstanding agencies that we fund.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Okay, clerk, that was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all. And one last point of privilege. It is my pleasure that I get to say that our staff is that, as of last Friday, we are 81% vaccinated. So, I'm very, very proud of that. Thank all of our employees for their efforts, and everybody in HR and in employee health, and all of our departments to be able to work with their employees. I think that reaffirms our commitment to not only keep this organization safe, but the city safe. So, I'm very proud to say we're 81% vaccinated. And that concludes my report.
That is great news indeed. Thank you, City Manager, for sharing that. Okay, next we have the report and recommendation to the Human Relations Commission.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. How are you today? Before I start, I just want to say, for the Raleigh Human Relations Commission, thank you for passing the nondiscrimination ordinance. And I also want to say thank you for the support the city gave to the powwow event that happened in Dix Park this past weekend. It was a great event, and it was good to see the community.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thompson, it's a little hard to hear. Do you, I think you just need to move the mic a little closer.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we hear you.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so, next page. This is our work plan for FY '22. I'm going to do FY '21, and some of, we ran into FY ' '22. As you know, last year, we had a shortened year, and we started really working in October. So, some of the things, we used our funding, we had a whole year of funding, so we used the funding, some of the things that we decided to actually do, but they ran into the next year. So, we haven't used any of our 2022 funding. So, some of these things you'll see, you'll see the dates look a little strange because they would run into after July, but '21, but we used the funding from the prior year. Just, so, I think when I came last year, we were in this odd time, and we had just completed our food distribution and PPE to populations that are affected by the pandemic during our Unity Raleigh event. After that, we've attended and tabled at multiple events and celebrations, cultural awareness, African-American History Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we also did actually two, we tabled at two events during the Juneteenth holiday. And we have successfully, as we just talked in the last section, completed a grant review of $1 million for the American Rescue Plan Act grant funding for human services agencies. And in August, we hosted a back-to-school giveaway in Robert Park to provide supplies and materials to 150 Raleigh students. Next page. For our fiscal '22 work plan, we met in the end of June-July timeframe and discussed the items that we wanted to focus on. This year's focus is racial healing initiatives, persons without permanent housing, LGBTQIA+ and mental health. These are the names of the commissioners that are part of the RHRC. Next page. So, what are we going to do going forward? Or what's our plan? So, what we have planned for November, we're going to have two meetings, having meals, having conversations with the LGBTQIA+ plus community and youth without permanent housing. For the youth event, we will be partnering with the Hope Center, which has a fantastic program for youth that have aged out of foster care. We're using funds to have a food truck and do meals and sit and have conversation. That is planned for November 14th. And the other event will be at the St. John's during the LGBTQIA+ plus health fair day that they're having on November 20th. So, the Human Relations Commission will be split at these two events to bring, have a meal and a conversation. The next thing we're looking to do is National Day of Racial Healing. This is an initiative that came out of the Kellogg Foundation. It will, this year will be, '22 will be the sixth year that this is being done. It's a national, nationwide initiative. It is to build discussion on the truth, which then brings racial healing, which then looks at transformation. There's a bill in Congress around this initiative, but we're going to give the observation on that day. And that's July, excuse me, January 18th. It's the day after King's birthday. We will begin the review of our human services grants for FY '22 and '23, starting in January. We start the initial informational, in January, we actually do the reviews and discussions in February, and come out with our recommendations sometime in March. We're going to resume the Social Equity Book Club. It was very successful, so we're going to continue that. The first book that we're going to highlight is The Sum of Us by Heather McGee, which also tie, will tie into our National Day of Racial Healing. We're looking to do a Mayor's Unity Day. That has not been fleshed out yet. We're also going to be host of a training session for the Raleigh DEI Boards and Commissions, and that training will be led by the North Carolina Human Relations Commission. We're looking at sometime in the spring. And the Raleigh Human Relations Commission committees will continue their work, and that's described in the longer version that we sent in for the work plan. I'll take any questions?
Okay.
Our budget for this year, oh, sorry, our budget for this year is $14,610 for FY ' '22. Now, any questions?
Do we have any questions? No, I think very well done and comprehensive. Mayor Perterm Stewart, you had your hand raised?
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to say that I love the focus for the upcoming year, especially the racial healing initiative, that I think he was, that was included in the backup, the focus on mental health, the Black History Education Committee. I think it's awesome, and I would just move for approval.
We have that seconded by Councilmember Melton, all in favor? Okay, anyone opposed? Nope. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have the report and recommendation of the Parks Recreation and Greenway Advisory Board. And this relates to a naming request for the outdoor track at Chavis Memorial Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor Baldwin and members of City Council. Oscar Carmona with Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources. The Parks Recreation and Greenway Advisory Board received a park naming application on April 12th of 2021, requesting consideration to rename the John Chavis Memorial Track to the Willie Dean Pat White Track at John Chavis Memorial Park. As a note, this naming request was received prior to City Council adoption of the new park naming policy, which was adopted on July 6th of 2021. The board was presented the proposal at their May 20th meeting and received public comments during their June and July meetings. At this time, I would like to invite Park Board Chair Jennifer Wagner, who will provide you the board's recommendation for this naming proposal.
Thank you, Oscar. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Good to see you all. As Oscar stated, we did receive a naming request for the track, and after hearing opposition, we extended the time period to review this naming request, which is per our rules. So, we extended that for an additional two months and heard further comments. We heard quite a bit of opposition related to this naming request. And after discussion at the board, we decided not to name the track for any individual. The reasons for this are that we did not want to dilute the history and heritage of Chavis Park and the name of the park itself. And there were other reasons that had come up, but that was, that was the main one. And we also felt that due to the John Chavis Memorial Park interpretive plan, there is an upcoming exhibit that's called Athletics in the Park. And in this exhibit, which will be Phase Two of the park, there is an area that will recognize athletes in that area, and Pat White is one of those athletes who is listed in this exhibit. We felt this was a more appropriate way to recognize him and other athletes. I'm happy to take questions on that, and I did also want to state, thank you for appointing two new members to the board. We're happy to have a full board now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from, for Jennifer? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Branch.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Jennifer, and the committee for your work. I too have heard from opposition for this recommendation. And though I know there's a history that, a positive history that Pat White has in the community, just with the number of multiple people that have come from this part of town, southeast Raleigh and the community, I move to uphold the committee's recommendation to deny the naming change.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mayor Perterm Stewart, all in favor? Opposed. Councilmember Fort, clerk, in opposition. Okay, thank you very much. Next we have the report and recommendation of the Economic Development and Innovation Committee. Thank you, Jennifer. Councilmember Melton has indicated he has no report, but the next meeting of the committee will be on 11/23. Next we have Recommendation of Growth and Natural Resources Committee.
Thank you. GNR met on October 26th to discuss item 1913, Wild and Exotic Animals. Our focus was largely informational. We got an overview of the city's animal control function and regulations that already exist within the city, county, and state. We revisited benchmarking previously completed about ordinances throughout North Carolina, as well as some new limited benchmarking data about operational practices. We heard perspectives from four experts representing the Wildlife Resources Commission, the Main Society, the Association of Reptile Keepers, and Code Venom Trauma Solutions. We had a great discussion but did not take any formal action. We asked for additional preparation for our meeting, including identifying options to narrow focus to exotic animals, reptiles, and amphibians, as we learned that the state law already includes provisions regarding wildlife, and consider varying regulatory tools, including their benefits and limitations for regulating exotic animals, reptiles, and amphibians, including but not limiting to prohibitions, registrations, limitations, and grandfathering opportunities. That was a lot. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on November 23rd at 4:00 p.m., and it will be a virtual meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Report and Recommendation of the Safe Vibrant and Healthy Communities Committee. First, we had the Cameron Park Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, which was upheld by the committee's recommendation. So, I will make a motion to approve that recommendation. Do we have a second? Councilmember Fort has seconded, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. That was unanimous clerk. Next we have rezoning Z5320. This was a split vote. The committee recommended that the rezoning case be denied. It was Councilmember Buffkin, Fort, and Cox in favor of denial. I voted against that. So, I don't know, Councilmember Melton, how do you want, how you want to proceed, but do you want to make, make the motion?
Mayor, I think you mean Councilmember Buffkin.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Buffkin, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt the proposed consistency date dated November 2, 2021, contained in the agenda materials, and to deny the zoning amendment and uphold the committee recommendation.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Fort has seconded. All in favor of denial, please raise your hand. Okay, that is Councilmember Buffkin, Cox, and Fort. Those opposed, please raise your hand. So, okay, that was the remainder clerk. The motion does not carry. I will, I want to say this about this case. I have really reflected hard. At a time when we really need housing, especially for seniors, at a time when we really need housing, period, I just felt that I could not support denial of this case. The staff has said it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and also consistent with a future use map. I also believe that this is going to allow more housing in a compact development form, and it's also in a location that's appropriate for growth, right in the Crabtree area. It also, I think this, the applicant really did listen to the neighborhood. There is appropriate density transition, buffers to adjoining residential development, and appropriate footage along Lead Mine Road. In addition, there were other conditions brought up for a traffic light in that vicinity. And this is, this has been a really tough case, but I am going to make a motion to But I am going to make a motion to approve this zoning. And I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated November 2nd, 2021, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action. I would ask if there's a second. Mayor Portem Stewart has seconded. Councilmember Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I would first like you to know that the committee was not able to finish its work. There was confusion about exactly why this was referred to committee. And of course, the chair voted against that motion. The committee was frustrated in its work and could have done a great service to the city in uncovering some important issues and improving our zoning process. Therefore, having given that report, I move that this case be re-referred to the Committee on Safe Vibrant and Healthy Communities.
Is there a second? Councilmember Cox has seconded that.
There was already a motion and a second on the table.
Yes, this is a substitute motion.
Okay. That has been made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All in favor, raise your hand to send back to committee. Okay, that, the motion, oh, those opposed, please raise your hands. Okay, three to five vote with Councilmember Buffkin, Cox, and Fort in favor of the motion. And so Councilmember Branch has his hand raised, and then Councilmember Buffkin.
Madam Mayor, this has definitely been a very interesting case. It came to us, I look back, I believe in March of this year. I think we finally referred it to committee over the summer. This case, when it was first proposed with seven stories, is now down to four. I think this case included a parking debt, which has been removed. When this case first came in, I was actually kind of excited because it had level floor, ground floor retail, things of that nature, but I wanted to listen to the neighbors' concerns. The neighbors' concerns were around height, traffic, and some, I think, felt this area couldn't support it because of the topology. Raleigh has a topology issue, period. But what gives me, you know, some comfort in supporting this is the case we just had on Crete Moore Road that came in, that also had height challenges, that was reduced and setbacks were improved, and this council approved. Housing is a major issue that we have, and I understand there's an idea proposal for townhomes in this area with this acreage. I think the most, from what I heard, for townhomes would be maybe 54 townhomes, or from 20 to 54. But for me, my issue is cost to live in Raleigh. And we talk about affordability. And being that I have lived experience of having family members in, you know, senior living facilities, another challenge, it comes to finding a place that's safe, finding a place in which family members can visit and, you know, they can come visit, maybe go get a bite to eat, and come back and spend that day or that weekend with a loved one. It's for all of these reasons that I'm voting to support this project. Is it a perfect project? I haven't seen one in my six years on council. But this is a project that I think will fit. There are apartments across the street. I know, I know the residents of Inman Park, their concerns, but I know there's parks on the other side of Inman Park Drive in this area, and there's some near North Hills Drive. With the setbacks and everything for this, I really think the applicant did work to try to listen to the neighbors and those in the community. Again, I pray that they continue to work together to address any concerns and conditions. But with this and the need for senior housing, the need to, for density that's not all the way out in the middle of 540, I'm supporting this project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Councilmember Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a comment before we vote. First off, let's, let's talk about what this case is not about. It's not about affordability. These units will not be affordable to anyone but the most wealthy seniors among our citizens. And that really misses the point. Sure, we need senior housing. We've approved a lot of it. I've been proud to support those. The question is, do we need it in this place at this time? And there's no good reason to approve this case. We talked about good government, the things that have gone wrong in the process with this case. I spoke to that here. You'll probably be hearing more about it. This is rewarding bad behavior. This isn't good governance. Good planning and growth, no. We should open our minds to the fact that sometimes our comprehensive plan and future land use map is wrong. And that's what happened here. The Crabtree Growth Center should not extend to the east side of Leadmine Road. There is nothing like this building in this area. It's a totally inappropriate building to put in this place, which should have a gentle transition to single-family neighborhood right next door. And how about harmonious community relations? My constituents have been working hard on this case. They've been constructive. They've been positive. And when asked to come up with an alternative proposal, they invested their own money in producing a realistic diagram of a townhouse community layout that would provide that nice transition to the single-family homes. It would provide missing mill housing, and it'd be appropriate for this place. And what about our inner council relations? We had a good thing going when we listened to the district councillor, and I guess that's out the window. So where does that leave us? Well, we don't have to go there. We can do the right thing, turn this case down, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buffkin. Okay, there is a motion and a second on the table for approval. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Okay, Clerk, that was Councilmember Buffkin, Fort, and Cox in opposition. I want to thank everybody for all their hard work on this. This was not an easy case. And, but thank you, everyone. Next we have, let's see, oh, items pending. We just had a new item. Again, another rezoning moved to this committee today. We will also meet on the 23rd at 11:30, and that will be the one item that we hear that day. Next we have the Report and Recommendation of the Transportation and Transit Committee.
No report, no items, no meeting unless something comes at our next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the report from the mayor and the city council. We'll start with Councilmember Cox.
No report today.
Councilmember Knight? You're unmute?
So excited to talk about this last weekend that I forgot to hit my mute button. Thank you, Madam Mayor, again. We did have a busy weekend here last weekend in Raleigh, and a lot of great things going on. Not only Halloween, but the powwow at Dix Park, and I and councillor Fort got to attend parts of the Five Points Hayes Barton 100th Year Anniversary, which was great for that area and that community. And I hope they make that into a annual event, actually. I do a couple of things. I do plan to attend the Chambers, the Wake County Chambers Annual Event in Wilmington for at least part of it, and I hope to see others there. I think some of the other councils will go to that and look forward to joining other community and business leaders down there. On December 1, I will be having another listening session, and I will be welcoming our new police chief. And she will be there to talk about her first 100 days plan and take questions and ideas from the audience. So looking forward to that, and that'll be up on the city website with the information to attend that on December 1. So looking forward to that. Come join us and hear Chief Patterson's future plans. Thank you, and that's all I have today, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton?
No report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fort.
Thank you. Wanted to congratulate Trey Roberts, the staff at the Dix Conservancy and the Dix Park staff for a successful series of events for the powwow this weekend. It started on Thursday night with the Legacy Series in Plain Sight, American Indians' Journey of Discovery and Repatriation, and they had several speakers and some films and some other great information that was provided. So that was an excellent event on Thursday night. And then, of course, on Saturday, they had the main event, the powwow, which was very well-attended. I think they anticipated over the course of the day, they'd have about 4,000 folks in attendance. It was a wonderful event, so congrats to them for the success of that. As Councilmember Knight mentioned, I wanted to congratulate Terry Henderson and the Hayes Barton Centennial Committee for a successful commemorative program over the weekend. They had events that started on the 29th, which was Friday night, and went through the 31st. So, and for them, that event was delayed by a year. The actual centennial, or the 100th year was actually last year during COVID, but they were not able to have their actual ceremony. So they fast-forwarded and moved it to this year. So congratulations to them for that. And I will also be in attendance at the Raleigh Chamber 2021 Annual Leadership Conference, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Branch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three items. The first one is November 18th, I will have a virtual District C meeting. The information will be going out from staff and will be posted. We will have a community organization coming out, talking about their impacts and the things that they're doing in the community, as well as I'll be sharing information of, about the district during the meeting as well. Two other items. One, the Regional Transit Association is having a commuter rail, is having a trip in January to look at commuter rail in South Florida and look at the impacts. And I represent the council and the city on the Go Raleigh Transit Authority, who's leading those efforts, and as well as chair of the Transit Committee. And I wanted to bring this up here for other councils to be aware, and also look at city, representing the city on this trip. I believe the mayor, you may be going as well.
Yeah, I'm co, I think I'm the co-chair.
Yeah, you're co-chair. So I don't know, Madam Attorney or Clerk or Manager, is there anything you need from us for that? Or, is it, okay, all right, just want to make sure. The last thing I wanted to talk about is, there was, One Wake had a meeting last week around, no, actually, I think it's two weeks ago now, around property tax and how property taxes are impacting low-income residents. And at that meeting, myself and Councilwoman Fort were attendants from City Raleigh, and the mayor was there virtually as well. At that meeting, we committed to working with the community to address how we can develop some type of program to address helping those in the over property taxes. And the county has already started looking into that, and I would like to make a motion that our city staff works with the county staff and those that the county is working with to look into how we can address or look at programmings, even some of our existing programmings, programs, on how we can address the property tax impact to our low-income and long-time residents of Raleigh.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Fort has seconded. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. That is, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. Members and council, in my report today, I want to share with you that about a month ago, I became aware of a situation in my district that's brought to light a confusing and complicated state of our regulation of amplified outdoor noise permits outside of the hospitality district. I've reviewed the ordinance myself. I can't figure it out, and it's very confusing. It's a cumbersome process, and it's hurting small businesses in our city and, and in particular, the Saints and Scholars Pub in my district. We've received a number of emails from folks. And because of the confusion, they have had to shut down their outdoor music and move it inside during COVID. It's less safe, and a lot of people just won't come because they don't feel safe. They've had a terrible time trying to figure out how to apply for a permit, and all of this has brought us to a situation where it's clear to me, we need, we need to do some work to improve this process. So I'd be happy to answer more detailed questions, but my motion today is that we instruct the staff to revise our ordinance on amplified noise permits outside of the hospitality district to streamline the process, clarify the standards for issuing a permit. And in the interim time, I'd ask that the staff stay enforcement for any business that has a permit application pending. Saints and Scholars intends to submit an application later this week, and so they would come within that group and would be able to get the music back on this weekend and get their business back running. Since this all happened, the restaurant has laid off two people, and their revenue's down 30%, and this is something we can fix, and I'm asking you to help out with that. So that's my motion today.
Seconded by Mayor Portem Stewart. All in favor?
I have a quick, one quick question. Is there a timeframe on that stay? Do we want to do it? Because I'm sure we want to make it indefinite.
Well, I would welcome the city attorney's help here. By intent, Councilbranch, and that's a good question. We had, you know, looked at a 30 or 60-day. I'm not sure that'll be enough time for the staff to get their work done. So, so we tried to narrow the group of people that would come within the stay by, by the requirement that they have submitted an application. So that would limit the number, and the expectation would be, again, I say stay, what I, I guess I really mean is more relaxed enforcement. This is not a wide-open, play music as loud as you want, whenever you want. This is, you know, we're expecting folks to be good neighbors while we try to get our ordinance in order so people can understand it and know what they're supposed to do to apply for these things. But, but the city attorney may look like she wanted to add something.
Yeah, there is a process in place right now that they can start pending the changes. The changes may take longer. So I think the idea is that as long as, especially use permit is now required for outside amplified entertainment, and so anyone who has an application for that permit, enforcement would be held off until the permit process was, was complete. So.
And, and after that time, they'd be expected to follow the rules in their permit, just like any other person that had one of the permits.
Presumably, they would either have a permit or the rules would be, there would be different rules in place by that time.
Oh, and may I add one more thing? I have, I have talked to the folks that originally expressed concern about this, and they're willing to give it a try. The restaurant owner is willing to, you know, do what he needs to do to be a good neighbor. So I think, I think we're going to be able to, as far as District A goes, I think we're going to be able to get along with this, and hopefully with some help from our staff, we can clear things up in short order.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Okay, Clerk, that was unanimous. Thank you. Councilmember Buffkin, I know that this has been, there's been a lot of discussion about this, a lot of emails and whatnot. Thank you for working so diligently to come with a temporary solution, and hopefully we'll have that permanent solution in place soon. So thank you. Councilmember Stewart? Um, Councilmember Stewart. Mayor Protem Stewart.
Thank you. Um, so I just have one item. Um, and if you'll bear with me, it's a little lengthy. Um, I wanted to share that the federal census data was released last month and is now available for the city to adopt new council member district maps. Where city council is responsible for adopting the final maps, we have consistently stated that we want to obtain input from the public before taking that step. And so I would like to propose a process for doing that. State and federal law mandates certain requirements for the maps, including that each district have roughly the same population. The County Board of Elections strongly encourages that district lines coincide with precinct lines. There are also several widely accepted principles which should be considered when drawing district lines. These include the following criteria which strive to assure equal population. The number of persons per district shall be within plus or minus five percent of the ideal district population. Cont- contiguity. All parts of a district shall be composed of contiguous voting precincts. Compactness. Ensure constituency of each district is reasonably well-related geographically within as compact an area as reasonably achievable. Preserve communities of interest. Keep existing neighborhoods and areas with common interests together whenever possible. Avoid pairing incumbents, which means avoid creating districts that force existing members to run against each other at the next election. Consideration of future growth. Look at where future annexation is likely to occur in the next ten years, which will increase the district's population. Our planning staff has the expertise and resources to draft the maps. I propose that we instruct them to move forward to create three separate maps that would balance the five council districts applying the criteria that I just listed. Once those maps are created, I would propose that we refer the maps for a third-party review to the existing council-appointed election study group to assist with obtaining public input, including from organizations that have expertise in redistricting, as well as provide council with a list of pros and cons of each of the maps. City planning and legal staff can be available to assist with questions about the maps and legal issues. The study group should complete this task on or before January thirty first, twenty twenty-two, and the group should report back to council at its February first, twenty twenty-two meeting. At that time, council will hold a public hearing and adopt the map before the March thirty first, twenty twenty-two deadline. And that is my motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Bufkin. Um, any questions? Um, Councilmember Cox?
No, I'm just going to say that I don't really think the study group is really the group that needs to be in charge of this. I think it's well-known that the study group consists of people that are political appointees and were large contributors of the mayor and other members of council. Uh, it's politically motivated and I think it would be a mistake to have them, uh, directly involved in this process. And, uh, and I also think it's, uh, a little presumptuous to draw up three maps in advance of having, uh, public engagement in the process. I would rather see the data presented to the public, uh, so that people can understand, uh, how our population has changed over the past ten years. And also, there hasn't been any mention about, um, you know, how we're going to deal with things like racial gerrymandering, for example, and, and ensuring that, uh, all members of all our communities, regardless of race, are well-represented in our districts. And, uh, so I think there's still a lot of work that has to be done.
Thank you, Councilmember Bufkin, and then Councilmember Branch.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, with regard to the study group, uh, Mr. Cox, I, I initially had, uh, similar, uh, reservations. Um, you, there are a lot of fine people on there. They are not just political appointees. They're former members of council. There's people that have run for council. And there are people who have served the community in other ways and important ways for a long time. Uh, the group itself does not have expertise in redistricting and civil rights. Uh, they've acknowledged this in some of their reports to us. And to make up for that, I would ask that, uh, the group be further instructed to solicit feedback from, uh, some of those organizations that do have that expertise. I was with them on the twenty-first of November for my town hall on this subject. Uh, we were joined by the Raleigh Apex NAACP, the Legal Women Voters of Wake County, and Common Cause North Carolina. And what we heard from them is, this is a good way to do this. It's not perfect. No process is going to be perfect. Uh, we live in the real world where we've got deadlines and time constraints and constraints on our resources. But this achieves an important goal, that politicians will not be drawing their own maps. We will have a public process. We will get public input. We will get the, uh, uh, input from those organizations that I've mentioned. Uh, and we will, uh, be setting a standard that other local governments can look up to. Uh, we also heard on that town hall meeting that Greensboro, now they have a bit of a special case with their situation, has an independent commission. Charlotte is doing something very similar to this. They've got three options. They've put them out for public comment, uh, before, uh, the maps are drawn or final. And, uh, so I'm awful proud of this process. I think it'll do a good service to our city. People have become much more aware and much more engaged in the subject of redistricting over the last ten years. And, uh, I think in this proposal that, uh, Mayor Protem Stewart has brought us, we see, uh, Raleigh can lead the way. So I will support this motion wholeheartedly.
Hey, Councilmember Branch?
Yeah, and hearing Councilman Cox's concerns and Council Bufkin's stated things I was going to point out, I was going to ask, does he have a, um, group that, um, he would recommend to be a part of this that hasn't given to any council people of the eight of us that can be a part of this to have addressed his concerns?
I do not at this time have, uh, recommendations for an independent commission. Um, I would hope that maybe staff could provide some recommendations.
So, so now, again, not, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but in light of that, I think it's important that everyone, when we, when the group meets, just make everything public on the website. Um, I know when they did the study groups, I, I went, I just Googled on the website. They met every second and fourth Wednesday. Um, they went virtual. It's, it's still on our City Raleigh website. So we just need to make sure that information's out there. We use social media so that all groups, all residents, all citizens, all people with different expertise can be a part of this. And I support the motion.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second, um, from Councilmember Bufkin. Um, all in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Um, Clerk Councilmember Cox was opposed. Okay, thank you, um, for that. Um, I have a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. Um, first, um, regarding the mask mandate. Um, I worked very closely with, um, County Commission Chair Matt Calabria and our Wake County Public Health officials. Um, the county has modified its mask mandate and we will mirror that. Um, so there's three sets of criteria that have to be met before the mask mandate is lifted. And, um, I think that Commissioner Calabria has ex- expounded on this, but I just wanted to reinforce this. I think there was some confusion. People thought once we hit under five percent positivity, um, testing rates, that we would lift the mandate. There's actually three criteria. Um, the positivity rates are one, and we are absolutely trending in the right direction on that. Um, the other is reduction in hospitalizations. We are trending very well in that regard as well. However, there's one area that where, um, the county public health officials take into account measurements. And so that is the reduction in transmissions. We are still in a red zone according to CDC guidelines. And that is defined as anything, um, like, oh, more than one hundred people per one hundred thousand are getting, um, are trend, or getting the disease. We're looking to get to yellow and that would be under fifty per one hundred thousand transmissions. And once we get to yellow, the county is going to lift the mask mandate. We will follow suit with that as well. Um, yellow, we have to be yellow for a week, so seven days. Um, and so that is the criteria that we are following based on the advice of, um, our Wake County Public Health officials. Um, I know everybody is anxious to move forward. Um, I think a couple of more weeks of patience. Um, like I said, we are trending in the right direction. What I don't want to do is lift a mask mandate and then two weeks later, we're back on there. So I'm going to ask everybody, just bear with us. Um, you know, we are trending in the right direction and, and praying that this comes to an end soon. So I just wanted to mention that. The second thing was the powwow at Dix Park. Um, Councilmember Fortnite enjoyed, um, Native American dancing celebrations, um, the music and the, oh, man, it wa- it was awesome. I can't tell you, um, just how, oh, the, the, the people who were there were so proud. It was a celebration of arts, history, culture. There were children there from like six months old to people eighty years old. It was just a tremendous community gathering. And, um, I, I want to also acknowledge Trey Roberts for pulling this together, the Dix Conservancy, but also our team Dix Park, Kate, Nick, I mean, great job. Just absolutely great job. I can't wait for next year. So if you didn't get to go, make sure you put it on your calendar. Next year, you will not be disappointed. Um, and then I just wanted to mention, I was going to ask staff if they can do this, um, for me. Um, I met with folks from the West condominiums, um, and there was a question about quiet zones related to trains. And I had explained to them the, the criteria that I understood, um, related to quiet zones. But there was, there was some disagreement. They believed that you can approach the federal government about limiting the time that trains can honk their horns. So I would just like staff to look into this and create a memo that I can forward to the, um, Homeowners Association President, so there's some clarity on the topic. Okay? All right, and that's, that's all I have for today. Um, let's see, now we have, um, clerk appointments.
I'll get this going.
You disappear on us.
I know. I don't know why. There I am. Okay. Um, the first item you have is the Arts Commission, one vacancy. There are no nominations as of yet. The second is Environmental Advisory Board. You have one vacancy. Scott Greenman received six votes, so would be appointed. The next is the Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, one vacancy. Philip Lynn received one vote. Kathy Rivera received four votes, so that will be carried over. Uh, the Historic Cemeteries Advisory Board, one vacancy. James Demby received six votes, so would be appointed. And so I think now you have a full slate on the Historic Cemeteries Board. Um, the next is Human Relations Commission, uh, youth member, one vacancy, no nominees thus far. Uh, the next is Human Relations Commission. You have two alternate vacancies. Tim Longest received five votes, so would be appointed. The next is the Raleigh Transit Authority. You have two alternate vacancies. Linda Davis received five votes, so would be appointed. Kendrick Martin received three votes, so you still have one vacancy there. Uh, the next is Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, one vacancy. Anne Spatford received five votes, so would be appointed. The next is Substance Use Advisory Commission, two vacancies. Kim Lee Amola and Christopher Gibson, both received five votes, so would be appointed. So that's all we have under appointments. Under nominations? Well, I'll get to it. The first one is, um, the Arts Commission, one vacancy. Uh, Tamir Samar was recently appointed to the Arts Commission, but it's been determined that she cannot serve, so there is one vacancy for consideration. The next is the Historic Resources and Museums Advisory Board. You have one vacancy. The term of Clarissa Godlet is expiring. She is eligible for reappointment and would like to be considered for reappointment. And you have her attendance record in the agenda packet.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, her reappointment. Seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Great. So she would be reappointed. The next is the Raleigh Convention and Performing Arts Center. Uh, the term of John Odom is expiring. And according to length of service, he would not be eligible for reappointment. So you have one for consideration.
Um, I would like to address that. Um, I spoke with, um, former Counselor Odom. Um, he has, um, been, well, he was named Chair of the Board. And usually chairs will serve a two-year term. He had, he is one year into his term and has asked, and this, there's precedent for this, has asked to be reappointed, um, in part because of continuity. Um, as we know, the convention center and our hospitality industry has gone through a lot with COVID. So I would like to make a motion to, um, reappoint him for one more year so he can fill out his full, um, chair as, um, full term as Chair. Councilmember Bufkin?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. When, when was the last time this happened? You said it happened before.
Um, yes, we've done this, um, for Planning Commission. Like, if there's issues that are, need some continuity, um, in leadership, we have, we have done this before. And I would say probably a handful of times during my tenure.
Yeah, okay, maybe, maybe the staff could help me. Can, can I get some examples? But?
Um, one, one you have, has, that has occurred before, it was on this particular board. Uh, when the existing convention center was built, uh, the Chair had just taken over and, uh, you suspended the rules, or that one, I think you just delayed the reappointment. You didn't sus- sus- no, I can't even, you didn't suspend the rules, you just delayed the reappointment for a year. And, um, until the convention center was completed, um.
We also had two instances on the Planning Commission where we extended the term of the Chair. One was Steve, um, Schuster, when, um, we were looking at the changes to the U D O. And then I break, believe Rodney Swink's term was also, um, extended for continuity purposes. Um, there were also others along the way, um.
There. One example is the Civ- Civil Service Commission, that you just extended the terms, uh, to complete a case, uh, that took an extraordinary amount of time. And so they, those, I think there were a couple of members there that their terms were extended. And you actually made an appointment, but delayed the effective date of that appointment until the cases could be handled. Usually it relates to a specific project or, or, or unusual circumstances, like a person just being appointed Chair and then having to go off. Uh, so there is, there is precedent.
There's a code provision that allows this to happen as well. So, um, if the council votes to do it.
Councilmember Cox?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'll support this motion and we'll second it.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Bufkin?
Oh, well, I, I'd just like an opportunity to say, uh, no, nothing against Mr. Odom. Uh, he did great service to the city. Um, I won't support this. I think the better approach is for boards to elect people that have time to serve out full term. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Um, all in. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand. Um, those opposed. Councilmember Buffkin was opposed. And just to reiterate, this is for one year. So at the end of his two-year term as Chair, he will come off. So clerk, if we could just note that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is um Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, you have one vacancy. The term of Jonathan Page is expiring. And I did just hear from him, he does not wish to be considered for reappointment. So there's one vacancy there. And that is all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, one thing I noticed when clerk was reading off the um appointments, um, not everybody is voting um for appointments. Um, please make sure that you cast a vote. Um, you know, these are constituents who have applied for these boards, who want to be considered and who want to serve. And um if you don't know somebody, reach out to them. Um, see if, um, you know, ask them some questions. I know why they want to be appointed, but their contact information is usually included. And I, I know it requires a little more work, but I'm also hoping when this new dashboard, um, we start using that, um, we, there will be more, um, it'll be easier to access information and um prepare. So until that time, um, if everybody could make sure they're voting, it would be much appreciated. Um, let's see, next we have the report and recommendation of the city attorney.
I don't have anything today, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, um, report and recommendation to the city clerk.
Uh, you received in your agenda packet minutes of the October nineteen work session and regular.
Full approval.
Okay, and seconded by Mayor Pertham Stewart, all in favor. That was unanimous, clerk.
And, and that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next, um, we will enter into closed session. I have a motion um that I'll read. Motion is in order to enter a closed session pursuant to G S one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight, three, to consult with the city attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider and give instructions regarding the handling and settlement of a claim in the following case, Oberlin Investors LLC versus City of Raleigh, Wake County Superior Court. So move, do I have a second? Mayor Pertham Stewart, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that is unanimous, clerk. We will enter into closed session. Good afternoon. We have just returned from closed session, where the Council provided direction to staff on the items listed in the closed session motion. Council will reconvene at 7:00 P. M. See everyone then, thank you. The meeting is adjourned.